I just want to use my laptop one for whatever makes sense. It should, at least on Bob's. Whatever, whatever makes you comfy. Oh, thank you.
My bad. I get the signage. Go on.
Uh oh Wendy.
If you're on the floor again, she's picking up.
She knows the cleaning lady.
So I'll work with her.
That thing's cool.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Going on?
Is it working faster than before the camera or is it still a few seconds? Tell her that. Oh, okay. Get that going. Stop and help me.
She's got too much paper now. It bogs them down.
Out driving.
There's some real wet holes out there. Absolutely stupid. Watching them go down. You went down. Like, was it the Amaro Road?
Oh, yeah.
And that thing is sometimes there's not a lot of ice in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm holding my grab.
Yeah, scary.
Around the corner and I guess went everywhere and came back down through. There's twelve inches of ice in most places, but.
But, but when there's not, yeah.
Okay, I'll call the meeting for order. Seven o'clock. Do you have any comments on the minutes?
No.
I move that we accept the minutes from January thirtieth. Vote. Two zero. On joining the KV COG. I don't feel it's necessary at this point. And the reason is LD two thousand and three. Is going to be delayed for at least two years. So LD two thousand and three is the one. That's requiring towns to do the. Low income housing. Yeah, changing our ordinances to allow that. Now, our ordinance review committee was looking for help. From KV COG to do that. And. Everybody in the state is in the same situation as we are. We don't have anybody that helps us. The state came out with the rules last Monday, I think it was. And the rules have just come out and they. Are waiting for public comment at this time. So there's no way we can meet the July. So everything is being pushed out and if it's two years. We really don't need.
We can hold out. Yeah.
So we don't really spend any money.
Question, wouldn't it be better to do something like this system living to help our seniors rather than low income housing?
Well, we gotta look at what this bill requires. It's, it's. I think it's covering low income. Healthily.
Seniors, but we don't have a choice. We can't. You can't say no to this.
We have to look at what the bill says.
Well, you're talking section eight housing.
Not sure.
Well, that's what.
That's, that's what low income housing is.
Try to stay away from it as long as you can.
Yeah, we gotta read the bill and see what, what it says.
Because the state, the state's gonna offer you money. It's gonna look good upfront. But I've come from a place where they come in, next thing you know, you're supplying services to everything. I know, and so.
Yeah.
And I think most of the town will say the same thing, you know, try to.
At this point, we know that we don't have to reduce the two acre minimum lot size. We don't have to reduce the two hundred foot frontage. So those are very big things that are in our favor. So. We don't really have to worry about it at this point anyway.
Is the ordinance review committee going to do, go to some of the public commenting on the rulemaking?
I haven't talked to Sue. I think she will.
Yeah, I, I think it would be very worthwhile for us to do because it's, it's the smaller towns in particular that have. Servicing issues for large growth of. Of housing, so.
Yeah, we're not talking about big. The town, you know, is not going to be looking yet. The only places that we can do something like this is in the growth zones and that's like. Up at Flying Pond Variety and out at the Pellet Mill. So we're not talking about areas where we can build big area, you know?
I mean, they're talking eighty units.
No, 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 that's rumor.
That's. The LD two thousand and three is state mandated. Towns have to allow for affordable housing, meaning that you have to allow multiple dwellings. On a lot.
Right.
And you still have the two acre minimum lot size. So if you have like a twenty acre lot, you can, you know, you can only put. What? Four, four lots, four buildings on it?
Well, it depends if they're multi, if they're multi resident buildings, you can put more.
Yeah, well, that's what the state is trying to, to get to is that if somebody wants to come in. Cause I, I was at some of the hearings for this. If somebody wants to do a multi unit apartment building or something. The state wants to be able to force us to accept it because it's providing affordable housing.
Not what Sue is saying. She's saying that we can keep the two acre minimum lot size. That means. Whatever goes on that lot. Is a single.
A single housing unit is two acres, but. Part of the bill was to allow for. Accessory, accessory. So if you wanted to build, do an in-law apartment. It could then be used to rent to other people.
So we're not talking eighty units, so.
No, but.
We really don't have to worry about it.
But I think that this sort of confusion is exactly why the, the timeline got.
Definitely.
Back because the state still make.
Especially in the soils around here. Two acres, yeah, I mean, where I came from, the soils were golden. And they set a section of town, maybe quarter acre. Lots and it was, your septic system had to be here and your well had to be here and the lots are so small. Everybody said, so you never had a second place for a septic system.
That's another restriction right there. So we don't have wells, we don't have septic system. So that's a big, yeah.
So, you know, that's something, as time comes, you want to watch, stay away from that stuff.
Right.
I mean. Where I came from, they allowed. Where you could build units together and have the clustered housing. Where if you have twenty acres and you built in an area and you had, the rest of the land had to be left open. You couldn't build on it, you know, to, to do that. I mean, that, if you want to have a apartment, you know, a two unit or three unit.
And you gotta remember, before we go. Too far in it, there's gonna be public hearings and stuff like that, so don't worry.
Let's make sure the state keeps it with something that's palatable for small towns.
Well, I'm in the same situation. I don't want to see that either. Okay, let's move on. I move that we, you have something?
No, I was, I was just.
I move that we. Accept Greg Caldwell's resignation from the planning board.
Yes, second with, with regrets, yes.
Motion.
Yes.
Two zero. And along that line, I have a. Candidate that would like to be on the planning board. Colin, he's been trying to get on actually since Doug got on. So I would move that we accept Keith Cohen for the planning board.
Second.
And a vote. Zero.
If he still has his last name.
C O U L L I N G.
Who is the new chair or the planning board, do you know?
You're voting soon, right? Oh, and here's, Tina, here's Greg, so.
Okay, on the auto graveyard.
Yes.
Yeah, we received one. The only. Great auto graveyard right now, we received a letter back from Sid Smith. And his neighbor wrote a letter saying that she was not concerned with his. Graveyard. Auto graveyard.
How many other?
There are three others, one of which really is not a graveyard and we wrote to her saying. She does not have to apply from here on in. And that. Rob Colburn on the Bean Road and. Herb on. With, with Witten Road. Which is as far south as you can get on. So basically Sid is.
Sid's a perro.
Yeah, so I'll get in touch with Bill. Say that his, is all set.
How many cars are they allowed to have that are not running?
It's in the ordinance, but I don't think there's a number.
Oh, I thought there was.
There's a number that makes it a limit and requires them to go into that.
Five in their own registered vehicles.
Right.
Five.
Then they have to apply, but I don't think there's a number. He can have like as many as he wants, as long as his neighbors don't mind.
I know, like, I think they put a limit of fifteen and then the next, there's another bracket up.
Anything else on that? Town generator. Okay, I contacted Dallas for the propane, for the two generators. And they will be. Taking a look at the, the two situations and getting ready to put propane in. Friday, the twenty fourth. Mid main generator is gonna be coming in, that's a Friday. They're coming in to change the electrical entrance here because of the. Damage because of the water. So they're gonna change the entrance.
This Friday?
The twenty four.
I think that's one, one more.
If you want, I can be here if you let them in.
It's gonna be first thing in the morning, yeah, okay.
That's first thing in the morning, eight, seven.
I think they're saying eight, eight or eight thirty. You won't be able to work on anything. Cause your power's gonna be off, CMP is gonna be here to shut everything down, so let me do it. You won't be able to do anything. Yeah, you're gonna be helping. It's not a. Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be. Next Monday. They should have it done in the morning, I would say. Cause that, that following Monday is a slot meeting.
Well, they have to have the shit, power shut off, they might have to wait for CMP to put it back on, but. Sometimes there's a delay.
Yeah, CMP is coming that morning, so.
They shut it off.
Shut it off.
But then they don't stay here and wait, they don't throw their thumb that they come.
Right.
And they have to come back, so.
Hopefully they have a good working. Yeah.
Is this next week?
Next, no.
Two weeks, twenty fourth is today.
It's like a week and a half, not that, it's not on a Monday.
It's a week on Friday, week on Friday. Okay.
The Monday is a holiday, I think, just always, next Monday, President.
No, changing it out.
It should be.
It shouldn't take long.
No, it should be like a Saturday thing.
Yeah.
And I think, to look back on this email from June, but I think they're doing the community center the same day or maybe this Friday?
Well, they're gonna have to wait for the, so to go for, before they do much. The only reason they're doing this is because they can do.
Putting the tank, they, they probably. Redoing the foundation too.
Oh, maybe they do.
No.
No, that won't affect putting in the tank there?
No. Okay, Somerset Communications. Okay. I had a training in Waterville today at the fire station. And I talked to the fire chief there. Their police chief is heading up a task force. For you that don't know, Somerset County. Is our PSAP, which is, they do our. If you call nine one one, it goes to Somerset County. They told us about a month ago that they would not be receiving our calls as of July first. So the police chief in Waterville is taking it upon himself to. And this is, most of the towns in Quebec got that same letter. That's Waterville, Augusta, those are the two main cities. He is looking into. Even the possibility of Waterville becoming a PSAP. But he's also talking with all the other. PSAPs and I'm not sure how many there are. There's gotta be five maybe in the state. To see how many can grab some of the towns in Quebec County that will need it. So there is some movement and I asked him if he could let me know what's going on. And I think the police chief in Winthrop is also probably working with them.
Was that?
You might know some of that stuff too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Was that the same? I think we got an email maybe just today.
I've been sending pretty few emails.
From our, at the emergency.
Yes.
He, so that's the same, yeah.
Okay, that's that. That's gonna keep us busy for a while. On the safety training. Safety training is gonna be set for. Tuesday, March seventh.
For the.
At night.
For the bloodborne and all that, so, yeah.
So I will get in touch with everybody, including you and Tina, have you done that?
I just have, I completed all of that.
So you should be all set.
Yep.
And Wednesday you'll be part of it too, so I'll, I'll let you know.
Sorry, what they've been doing here?
What it is, is you'll be trained on fire extinguishers and bloodborne. Tuesday night, the seventh.
Okay.
Oh, do you have?
It won't be long.
Yeah.
It'll be about, what, oh, you gotta buy in a town. What time is that?
Six thirty two.
I'll see if we can get a video. Cause I'm sure there'll be others that won't be.
I only have to be there every other week, so I gotta, we can see what week that falls on.
Okay.
What, what was the date again?
Seven. I'm having a cataract done that day and I'm hoping. Yeah.
Okay, that's the first Tuesday, that definitely is their warrant.
Okay. I'll check on that too.
Well, if you're having certain, let me look at my calendar real quick, Bob, cause maybe I can plan to cover if you might be. Recovering.
What's that?
Yes, do we not use yoga for all that training?
Yep. That's gonna be given by Lynn, not Lynn Martin, but someone that she recommended. It's probably who did it for the Agusta, oh no, Augusta is probably done by your fire department, yeah. And I think Jason can do it. Here if we need it to be filled in, Jason can do it. He did the fire department and he did a pretty good job. So.
Does Tina have a walk-in frame, right? She should be set up.
Yep.
For that.
I just need my restaurant, yes.
Yep.
I'm all set. Okay, well, I'll put it on my calendar box if you're not feeling.
Okay. I should be fine.
Okay.
They go in and out and no problem. Okay, other business. We had a selectmen's meeting, it's getting harder and harder to do selectman meetings every two weeks. Things come up and we had. One last Tuesday during the day.
Yeah.
And what happened at that one was. Thirty Mile River made a presentation, they wanna get grant. To do a, an assessment of. Septic data, to make a septic database. For all the septic systems along the thirty mile. Rivers, streams and lakes. And so in our particular case, it would be part of flying pond, the streams, mini home. Echo, stuff like that. And what is particularly good about this is it's not, it, it's only gonna be a database. And what it'll show us are, is they're gonna go through our. Files, what. We have anyway. And give us a assessment on and risk of any of those parcels that might be of risk. High risk, low risk, stuff like that. So it looks like it'll be something that we can use down the road. And not cost the town much, maybe five hundred, I think she was saying.
What, what, what are they having for an outcome, for instance, when they do their study?
Yeah.
Okay, when they isolate things that are at risk. What is their remediation outcome?
No, nothing. Uh, right now, all they are doing is getting grant and it'll give us a database with. Possiles and a risk assessment for these parcels, that's all.
Okay, well, I hope they do a better job than they didn't bill grade. That was miserable because I started.
Yeah, it's not gonna give, it's not gonna say, hey, you, you have to fix your septic system or anything like that. It's simply gonna give us a tool for down the road maybe.
Well, down the road though means remediation, means risk remediation.
Possibly.
And, you know, that, that's, that's a whole nother ball of wax that nobody really wants to even address.
Possibly.
What's the point?
It's not costing us much, five hundred bucks.
Well, yeah, five hundred bucks for what?
Right now, we don't know anything.
You don't have ages on your septic system.
That's what they're gonna find out.
Why don't we know that?
We don't. We're gonna have someone go through all these files.
Most, most towns only keep septic records for like three years and then they're.
Well, no, we've got more than that.
Well, most towns, it would happen to three years.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
So basically, yeah, so basically someone's gonna go through all those. Put them on a database.
Map it out.
If anything was put in after nineteen seventy three.
Right.
There's a plan.
Right, okay.
That's when the state come in and put that in there. Just so many records to try to keep.
The septic records aren't fully organized by anything other than date, that's really hard to track, come back to the properties. I tried to do that.
His names have changed and.
Oh, yeah. Different street names, you know? When I did mine here five years ago, I had to register with the town, okay? What my plan was, which had to be designed by a soil scientist. He had to sign off on it and so his name should be on record. And then I also had to register who was going. And then I also had to register who was going to actually put it in. Okay, so the contractor, which should be on record. So, you know, that's five years ago, thank goodness, but, you know. Those sorts of details, I have no idea whether how far back that goes.
Well, and it's also recorded by your lot number. And that's what they'll go by.
It should be, but those records. Yeah, whatever I couldn't find, I, I filed them with a lot. But there was so many.
A lot of the soil play just keep records.
Well, yeah, they'll use our files, they'll probably use the state files too. I'm sure they'll get something out of that.
Now, they have a building now that I noticed that they took over the thirty mile watershed. And what's that going to become? And their septic system isn't at risk? Well, it can't be any worse than that ridiculous building they built in, in Belgrade, Grand Order Mill Coil. And they built the most state-of-the-art septic and water collection system that, that man has ever known. And if that was supposed to stand as an example of what you and I could possibly. Put in around our camp, you know, I mean, it certainly was not an appropriate sort of thing. And they never bothered to go down to the, to, through the whole village area. And do an assessment of septic design and so on before they put in their big whatever. And that's just a major failure, that whole assessment. And Ro- uh Belgrade borrowed from the thirty mile watershed for a lot of their staffing and stuff while they were figuring out what they were trying to do. Which was also very unfair to Belgrade, because Belgrade couldn't expand any because they had these people, it was very debauched.
Okay, um, the next item is property stability. Right now. Anybody over sixty-five and if they have a homestead exemption. They get to freeze their taxes. Right, um, that is probably gonna go away. And what they are looking at right now is. If you're sixty-five. And you're at eighty percent of, of. The regional medium family income, if you're below the eighty percent. You will get fifty thousand dollar. Write off. Yeah. Yeah, right now.
Property is two hundred thousand, we'll still pay taxes on a hundred fifty thousand.
Right, right now, your homestead exemption is. Twenty-six, twenty-six thousand, so we're gonna go to fifty thousand. So that's pretty good. Now, if you're, if your medium is between eighty and a hundred thousand, you'll get forty thousand off. Not bad. It's a little easier to figure than what. What is in place right now, because what's in place now, you have to fill out that paperwork every single year. And these people don't realize that they have to do that. Just here. You do it once and it just keeps on going.
It's just like a homestead.
So what is the average?
I didn't look. I um.
I'd imagine I'd be counting would be my guess. That would be my gut.
Every county and then it looks at the town. Yeah.
Can you get that information for us? Or can you tell me where to go to get it?
Should be able to.
Yeah, I can go to M and A and get it too.
And that, so there's no ten-year limit now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, now you do. Right now you do, but with this, you still have.
Well, no, if you're, if you're getting homestead exemption right now. You're getting twenty-three, twenty-six thousand. But if you're at the, below eighty percent of the medium. You'll get fifty thousand instead.
For ten years then, right?
That goes away. If you're homestead exempt.
Is that only for sixty-five and over?
You gotta be sixty-five.
Okay, there, we still have to have people apply for it because we don't know the ages of.
And that's, that's another thing that. Uh, Trio's gonna have to work out. Well, not only Trio, because there's another out in Maine that has the same thing, that's too old.
Vehicle records that are in the system and hit head into the real estate records, and that's gonna give you your birth dates right there. That's how you keep your Boston King. Yeah, but that's gonna be minimal. You're gonna have minimal people.
I know, and that's, that's what's difficult is being able to get. Them to, to know that they have that option. It's, you know.
You can't use that information either unless you have the permission.
Is that something that the clerk can notify the people as they're paying the property taxes?
We have aging in place that can help.
Yeah, aging in place, we, we send out all kinds of made phone calls and.
Now, if you own multiple properties, only one qualifies.
For homestead, yeah.
So you just buy all your properties into one.
And they're going to be cracking down too on the homestead because it's. A lot of people are claiming homestead exemption more than one. They're going to be cracking down on homestead exemption because we're finding out that a lot of people are claiming a homestead more than one place.
It's one thing after another, really, it's, you know, yeah, yes. You can, I have other things, but go ahead. So we drank a late last Friday that our testers are out and about. And they're not being very neighborly when they're approaching people's homes. And spouting off at the mouth when there's cameras that are on them. I wanna make a suggestion. If they haven't got anything to say, nice, keep their mouths shut. Because we're paying for this.
What's the complaint about cameras, your surveillance?
I will, I will tell you. That the people that had the problem. Contacted me directly about it because they know I come here and neither one of them could be at night because they both work nights. So, and they weren't, the neighbors weren't hoping very highly of me that. In a public hearing, we can't discuss personal matters. I have cut out, I have contacted, they are, they are hired contractors. I totally understand that, but I'm bringing it to. Right, I have talked to the owner. And he knows what happened. I sent that information to him and he needs to deal with it. They're not employees, they are contractors. The other thing that came up was, what was it? If they're training on our time. They're not training on our time. They're contractors, they can have fifteen, twenty people in here, we pay the same rate. Okay, just so. Okay, I just didn't want any rumors. If it's gonna happen and they're gonna come to my house, it's probably gonna end up terrible. Well, I, I made it known for the owner.
To the owner, the homeowner? Yeah, I was just gonna ask, where's the accountability for this contractor? Okay, so, so any complaints that happen have to go through whom to whom?
So Bob heard and Bob contacted the, the business.
I got. I had somebody come to me, they know I come to meetings too, and they all lived it, and yeah, they said, you know. That person should not have a job. I mean, the way he saw the video, I haven't seen the video, but he came to me, he would live it, he said. He shouldn't be in our town, plain and simple, and he had other people saying the same thing, he said, I haven't seen the video.
I had somebody come to me. Same, same situation.
The next reporting period for the uh art funds. Is April thirtieth. So I need to know everything that was spent on the bridge and broadband.
And the remaining funds are just on hold right now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to know the balances too. You talked with the attorney, go ahead.
Yes, I reached out to the attorney. I don't know if everyone, update for everyone here and everyone on the internet. Um, we have gotten a new town attorney, oh gosh, not that long ago, maybe a year, Tom, yeah. Um, but Tom's schedule got very busy, so he won't be able to fulfill that role anymore. He recommended someone, one of his colleagues. Um, so I reached out to her and um, and she's happy to do it, I reached out to her, so she'll come meet with us. Hopefully next meeting or the one after, so we can. Okay, awesome. So. Um, so hopefully we can meet with her in the next season.
And she did do the work with us for the warning about.
She did do a little bit of work for us, so we have a little bit. Modern pests, they're growing up on that things, do we, do we need them anymore?
We did have a real problem when we first started, we, we were finding mouse droppings all over the place. The last, I think since last summer when. When that changed over there, uh, they haven't found any more indication of things. I, we have a year contract.
The minute you stop, that's when the problems start.
I don't think we'd had a problem before, but then we had a lot of animals and stuff over there that.
I haven't seen any times.
So what do we pay now?
Uh, it was seventy-eight.
They're going up to ninety-eight.
I, it was seventy, and I think it went up to eighty-something, now they're going to ninety-eight. I will look at and see when the contract is up. Is that, the other thing is that it's a whole lot cheaper to keep them on a monthly basis versus. The first time they come in, uh, if you see the signs, it's a couple hundred dollars. So, they, they give us a report every month and they haven't found anything except some spiders. I would kind of say. They have all those boxes here. Cause we really did have a mouse problem, they have really cool electronic boxes and.
How about if we got some electronic boxes and checked it ourselves?
I kind of feel like. We've had a clean bill of health for a year now.
We're gonna see how long's left on the.
This is something that's gonna probably come up. Transfer station fees. Transfer station fees, I looked, I was down at Reed Field Transfer Station the other day. And there's, their fees have gone up. I hate to do it, but. We are paying, they went up on our, our fees, uh, waste management went up. The amount that we paid for getting rid of tires went up. Getting rid of uh mattresses, all that stuff, this is our way up. Went up a little bit, but here, yeah, but we're looking at even more things. Other venues, fluorescent bulbs, stuff like that, I'm looking at a couple. For nothing. In fact, they'll give us a box, they can put them in and mail it right out. We don't even have to pay for the mailing. Um, so I'm looking at other things to try to keep the price down.
Well, yeah, but they're hazardous.
Yeah, I hate, yeah, it's, it's a twofold thing. If you charge more for your tires, you're gonna end up with them in the woods, but. So, we, we did find a place, if we get, we, we don't take tanks. But if we get some, I found a place that'll take them. And I'd be in Chelsea, we'll take them.
Um, I just have a quick update, um, outside of the attorney, so I reached out. Earlier this year to the Y about swim lessons at the. I heard back right away and they were basically like. Yes, we know everyone wants it, we don't have enough staff. So I went back and said, well, what if we found, so you know, what can we do for workarounds? Um, and I haven't heard back to my lung. Um, I did notice that Reed Field was able to pull some together last summer, so I'm gonna reach out to them.
She will do the swim program. She will do the, do the training. And I told her, as long as she does it at the Y.
Yeah, so I re, I thought, I remembered that, so I asked the Y people if we have someone, but I'll ask Reed Field too and see what their. Work around the system.
How would that work? Because we, in my memory, since I haven't been here that long since we've done it. Um, and I think it was only the first summer that I was here that we did it, cause then COVID again. When we did it through the Y, we weren't paying the people, that was all, we collected fees and. And we didn't pay the instructors.
They collect, you know, they, right, you charge a fee to each. Kid that wanted to take.
Yes, but then we pay why, we didn't pay the person.
Is that what they said? Is that what they said?
Yeah, I think so, that my understanding was, so it could be under their. Because I, I imagine our insurance company would have some. Thoughts about that.
Like always they buy.
Well, they would come under our volunteer insurance.
No, no, it's not volunteered, because it's very specific, potentially dangerous. You're, you're in charge of kids in the water. So there was quite a liability there, which the Y was set up to take care of. And that's why I don't think we want to pay the instructors directly, but go through the water.
Yeah, so I'll see what they say to my, my long list of questions, I'll. Oh, good idea, I'll see what Reed Field.
I also wanted to send something through the school. To check about softball, baseball, soccer. We need to get someone to run those programs, and I don't think they ran last year.
Yeah, maybe they went to. Heidi was, but she. Yeah, just too much going on, and I think her kids are getting a little older now.
So we have, we have the soccer, we have baseball, we have basketball too, I think.
I don't know, I don't think so.
They only purchase softball and soccer.
That I, I'll try. That's about it, that's all I had anyway, yep.
I'm planning board is supposed to be having a meeting up here Thursday night for the.
Oh, that's.
I just sent out an email asking everybody if they remember.
Anybody on the planning board have keys? Is the key to the building?
No, not this one.
So you're, you're gonna have.
Yeah, we generally hold our meetings at the library.
Yeah, but you're gonna be, you're gonna wanna come here, though. I would, but I'm having an operation that day, and I don't know what shape I'm gonna be in.
Greg Caldwell is supposed to have all the information, him and. Who she wants it, the CEO. Putting it together.
Okay, do they need the training or?
Yep.
Hey, I don't know how to.
It's, it's a, they make training.
I don't know how to.
Oh, that's not at night.
Four to seven or something like.
Computer, yeah, you're gonna need a computer.
Did you find the time, sorry, I'm trying to find it in my email too.
That's not mine.
I have a, I have to facilitate a webinar for my, my day job, but it's evening.
I can be, I can come up if you can give me a quick, how to.
Leave this one here, I can leave that computer here.
I can show you.
Okay. Four thirty Thursday.
We'll do it. Good.
All right.
Anything else?
Does anybody know who we're supposed to be contacting?
At MMA?
For this meeting? I'm sure that Bill's not gonna be here, and I know.
Yeah, they're doing it soon, we kinda need.
And do you know if Greg, we could ask him this, but do you know if he registered before?
Greg registered, I think.
I will talk to MMA, I'll make sure I have the link on this.
To whomever.
Put the link on this one.
Well, they can send it to my email. Like I said, I think it was. Was the original ones that told us we had.
I'll check, and then, I'll get it all on my, my link.
Bill had said something about it, and then.
Yeah, oh, I'll, I'll make sure.
Okay, you're working on it, I'm, yes, I, I'm reading the, I'm reading the last chance to register email here.
Keith wanted to be on it too, so.
Oh, well, maybe he registered and can. We'll find a Zoom link.
Yeah, I'll have it on that.
Before we go, Carrie. Courts, okay, okay. You've got it, you've got it.
I might even be able to come in, I'm not sure. Most of it can go to me. Motion that we adjourn.
All right. All right.
I've gotta come and know when I'm gonna come to visit. I'll make an appointment.